Good evening, once again, thank you for joining. We are back again, it's been a while, how are you doing? Thank you so much for joining, so those of you on TikTok, thank you as well. Thank you for joining, thank you for joining, thank you for joining. Once again, we say thank you, everyone of you. Thank you for joining, Notambo Land, what is happening? Thank you for joining, thank you for joining, thank you for joining. Thank you for joining. Thank you for joining. Good evening, again. Notambo Land. Thank you for joining. Good evening, good evening, good evening. We are back again. We are back again. We are back again. Yes, are you there? Notambo Land, are you there? You cannot mute yourself.
Good evening, good evening, everyone.
So, our purpose to continue to enlighten people. Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead. Go ahead. Go ahead, go ahead. Are you there?
Yes, I'm online with you.
Once again, we are here to enlighten people to share experience of what people are having when it comes to UK social workers, UK social services. Thank you, thank you. To those of you on YouTube, please, once again, don't forget to subscribe, and those of you on TikTok, don't forget to subscribe as well. Don't forget to subscribe, I swear, don't forget to subscribe. I'm not sure whether the network is going on well over there. Notambo Land, are you there?
I can, I can hear you clearly.
It's breaking on my side here, I don't know why it's breaking on my side here. Is it breaking on your side as well?
No, your voice is clearly hard here.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you very much. Without wasting much of our time, if we can just go ahead.
Okay, thank you very much. This incident happened about few months ago. And coming to you, the however of my children, I tried to learn about the talk with children. They came around, I have tried to explain how things is here. What to do, what not to do. So I believe I have tried my best concerning how to escape from all these people. And several times I spoke with them and I'm getting a good that I can explain much of it. So I could understand if before happened, there were being taken away from family and they try to see what happened to this boy. The boy has changed, he's dirty. So I was just telling them that in case it's not anything that is happening at home. The same thing might happen to you not knowing that I will be the next victim. So my surprise, two days after, I was just at the school to hold the children. So I was just telling them that.
Right, sorry for that.
I was told that, yes, I was told that due to some things that happened, that I won't be able to go home with my children. So I was surprised, what really happened there, I have to meet the family team that there was a disclosure, I told them not with my chance. There wasn't anything like, no confidently, I was telling them there was nothing happened there. They should go and make their investigation. So they asked me to stay in one of the office. Before I know it, a policewoman came. That she's the one that is going to interrogate the children, interview them to know what really happens. So I was just looking at, maybe they are just trying to, they are trying to get information about something from me. Now, when the police came the first time, she said that one of them had made a disclosure that I used to beat them with an oblique. You know, I, I, first of all, I laugh, that is not possible. This must be a lie, because I have never set my hand to beat my children since they arrived in UK. But the only thing I always tell them that if you keep on giving me problem, I would mind it turning you back to Nigeria. So confidently, I told the police that go and meet the second one and find out if the disclosure is true. Now, on coming back again, the police came and told me that the second child too, that she made the same disclosure. That the first one said that I use belts to beat her. The second one said I use phone charger. You know, I was laughing that this cannot be true. Something must have happened. But seriously, there is no problem, but for now, I can't go home with my children. I have to call the third one in another school. When I called the third one, his phone was just ringing. He wasn't allowed to pick the call. That is when I knew that something has happened. So I was just confused, I don't know what to do. Because I've been hearing that these people, they come around, take children away for so many years, you will have access to your children, you have to make an appointment before you can see your children. That was how tension I began to I began to be afraid. Is this how all this story that I've been hearing, is this how it happens? That means I won't be going home with my three children. They said that there is nothing they could do. I have to call my partner, that you have to come around, something is going on here. She has to book a taxi to come around. But the funny part of it, when the policewoman was asking us that there was a disclosure, you know, even it was just like as if they cooked a lie against us. You know, we were just laughing. So our surprise, the police took it against us. Now, when there was an issue, that both of us, we don't take it so that we are just laughing. She documented it. They now ask us that who are the person, who are our neighbors that they can keep the children with? So we are just suggesting that we have a very close neighbor. We collected the data of the neighbor. They went ahead, they checked, they said that there is no way that they can't take the children to or the place that the children were not safe. Now they have to look for another family that they can stay with. And to God be the glory, we we just gave them the and when they, they ask the children that are they safe with the family? The children said that they were okay with the family. That was how we are asked to write the statements that we are not going to have access to the children. We are not going to have access to the family that the children will be staying with. Unfortunately, that day, we cried home with the house to the children. Now, while they are making the investigation, they asked the children the nature of their parents' jobs. Now, I was doing two jobs. I was working as a carer and also I was working as a supply teacher. But the children, when they asked the eldest one, so I was looking at how he can hide those information. But in out of that is better, he disclosed one. So he disclosed that I'm working as a supply teacher. Immediately, they had that I'm working as a supply teacher. They sent a mail to the company I'm working with. The second day, the company called me that unfortunately, I won't be able to go for any shifts until we are able to get another information from a referrer from the council. That was how I stopped working as a supply teacher. The second day, our children, we had the one, it's very close to our house. We have signed an agreement that we are not going to be contacting the children, won't be able to contact the family. When the children were going to school, they have to pass through the front. We now open the curtains of the window, maybe if I had the children passing, they will just look at this is where I used to live. But unfortunately, this particular day, the boy was afraid because he knows what is happening. He has to pass and we are just taking from the window. Possibly if you look at the window, it's going to see the parents. That is when we now acknowledge that something is really, really bad that is happening. And we tendered off for a family friend that just gave us a contact that she has had about a particular organization, Save the Woman, that assist people in such a situation that is in a position to guide us on what steps to take. That was how we contacted Save the Woman. And when I explained, if I was so afraid that I will like come to UK and leave my three children into the hands of these people. So when I called, when I spoke with Mr. Ola Save the Woman, so I said that there is no problem that he's going to give me some letter that I'm going to send to him. That Save the Woman organization is like an advocate. That any, they have anything to discuss with me, they have to contact him. So he's acting as our advocate. So all this period, he was advising, giving us different advice on what steps to take, the rules that they have given us that we should try to abide with the with the rules. Now, the second day, the second day, the particular person in charge of this case, so that she called me that, am I at home? I told her I'm at home. She called, she said I have sent the number of the family my friend was staying with. I sent the number to her and they, from the information given to us that the girl and the student provided, the family they were staying with agreed. But when I contacted Mr. Ola, he said that it's just like a trap, that I shouldn't want that to go. Because they are trying to set a trap that if I fall in the trap, I go to rebalance the children from that family. And when they will draw the children from that family, then I will get children. Not up to five minutes, this person is not called that I call her for my children who are staying with. That means I'm going there, I've been doing this, I've been doing and what really happened was that my phone number and the phone number of that family is about two digits that differ from each other. So she started saying that she
Those of you on TikTok, are you able to hear the speaker, the guest very well? I believe the network is fluctuating.
Hello?
Hello, go ahead, sir.
Okay, I can hear you now, can you hear me?
Please put a comment on TikTok if you can hear.
She said that I've been contacting the family. She said I've been contacting the family, which I have made an agreement not to contact this and that. So I had to call her again and explain to her that, look at these two numbers. They are not the same. The fourth number I said to you was the number of the family. Look, it was after like 10 minutes that the woman now agreed that she was now telling me that she was, she's so sorry that she didn't take a time to check out the two numbers, that there is no problem. When I informed Mr., I said I shouldn't accept that apology on the phone. I should send an email, explain what happened because they might bring it up in future, that I have done this, I have done that. Fortunately for me, since the email to her, there wasn't any response, I copied, I copied the man, people that were involved, I copied up to like three of them. That is to make clarity on the information that they are going to pass across and any information regarding this case, they have to send it through an email, right, to be documented. That was how the children were with the family, our neighbors get across them. The person in charge rang us that the children said that they are not ready to come home. They were this. They are just, we just keep calm, that anything that we believe that our children, they are coming back home. And we receive a lot of answers from people, from a lot of experience about people. We are not the first person that we happen to. A lot of people have experienced such and they are able to scale through the situation. And to God be the glory, after five, after one week, the eldest one went to the, with the principal or the headmaster, whatever they call it, that I want to see my parents, I'm going home. That I'm not happy here, I can't see my parents, so they have no choice. They asked to contact the person in charge that this boy wants to see the family, so I come and take him to experience. They did, they asked for, we are now trying to call him to know if this person in charge has been with, with him. Not knowing that the boy used to come home by himself. Whenever he's coming home, he's going to pass through the front of our house. We just be taking him from the window, we don't have access to him. He too will be passing, he will be crying, looking at the window, we will tell him, just go, go. We don't want problem. So the boy is not happy. While we are now trying to contact the boy, the person had gone to school to pick him, both of them were come. He was, she was now asking that who is the person calling you? The boy has to lie, that it was a mistake that one of his friend was the one calling. So when they got home, the boy was happy. They said the other two girls, that they are not the two people friends and they are afraid now, the reason that they are now who make their appearance to the family with them, they are going to send them back to Nigeria, this and that. Now, when they were there, they have to invite us to a conference. So when we go to conference, they now say that nothing does happen. Start, we are threatening them, that we are taking them back to Nigeria, that leads we know that a psychological effect on them are traumatized by our, our threats. And when they gather all the reports from the school, all the reports were good, there were some things that we are not aware of before the tide protection conference. Like registering with the dentists, registering with the officiants, all those things. So we are advised by Mr. Ola that we should quickly go and take a step before that day, because they might use it against us at the, at the conference. And we make sure that we are able to, to take this as a step to register with we, even we are unable to register with the dentist, but we have been there, we have the permission to supply them that. We have tried this, the students were just coming into this country and we tried this. There wasn't any appointment for any cares, patients. So at the conference, where they started everything, is just like all of them, they, they know the end results. At the end of the tide protection conference, they say that they have to they put the children on tide protection plan. Tide protection plan for the next six months, they have to be checking them, this and that. And I think a few, a month, a week after the children have been taken to our neighbor, they have to return all of them back to us. Because there is nothing, the, the children, we were fortunate to contact the children through someone that has been speaking with the children, that this is what is happening. This is what is, this is the end of what is going on. So the children now cry to them that they want to go home, they want to see their parents. Now, at this point, they don't have any choice than to return them back home. And since then, they've been coming every, every, I think, at times twice in a month, at times once in a week. While all this were going, we received a message from the police that we have to come around and write a statement concerning what happened, that if we need a lawyer, we can contact our lawyer. That they are making their own investigation. And at that particular time, there are a lot of challenges that the family is facing. And these people, they know that we are passing through a difficult period at that time. Because our vitality was about to expire. We are looking for a way to extend our, our stay here. And at the same time, this is happening. These people, they know quite a lot because from the information we supply to them, they got it that we are vulnerable at that particular period. Which we expect them to show concern, how they can help us out. But it's none of their business. I don't know, maybe they have special interest in getting the children, I don't know. But when we went to the police, we were interrogated. After the interrogation, a week after, the police rang us that from their investigation, there wasn't any, any mark on the children that they are dropping the case. So the police dropped the case about a month or six weeks after the incident happened. After police dropped the case, we supplied the information to the, to these people. When we supplied, they said that their own case, that what really happened, if at all, we are not guilty of abusing these children, that something must have happened that made them to make such a disclosure, that they want to find what really happened. Now, we are going to give them enough time, they will keep on checking the children, there is no problem. But for me, I know that the disclosure wasn't a reality. But one thing that I want our people to understand about this case is this. While we are bringing our children to this country, we, 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 we don't foresee the changes they could make in this environment. What I discovered was that my children, they have tried to mingle with their children. The way they behave, they want to behave that way. That makes them to change, they want to be like them. And as an African man, there is no way you want your children to be, because you I, I work as a supply teacher. Most of these children, I see how they behave, which I will never allow my children. Possibly while the teachers were interrogating these children, they might have put some words into their mouth to make such a disclosure. Or maybe some of the friends they made in school or some of the movies they watched, some of the books they read has changed them, which I wasn't, I was not noticed at all. If I had noticed, I would have tried to correct it in them. But it was when this incident happened that I now recognize that something is wrong somewhere. So I was able to draw my children closer, try to create a bond that will make them to know that they don't have any other family than we, that we are gathered together here. That all these empty promises that they are promising them, they are going to do this for them, they are going to, that they are just lying. And I also showed them some videos on YouTube of children that have been taken into, that have been taken by these people. I also showed it to them, they saw how they have been abused. That was when their eyes was now open. That the same thing would have happened to them if they were being taken away. And since then, they've been doing, they've been doing fine. Anytime the, these people, anytime they come, they come around, I'll just allow them in and I will excuse them. Any discussion they want to have the children, they have it with them, they play with them. All the plans that I have for them, taking them out, all those things, I didn't stop it. So like that was the time they even made an appointment that they want to come. And then the children were on holiday, they went to Glasgow, all those things. And they discovered that there was nothing. How the disclosure came up, they couldn't explain. About two months later, I, I received a mail from DBS. DBS just wrote me that they have a referrer about an abuse and they are making their investigation. He, when they make their decision, if I need a lawyer He, when they make their decision, if I need a lawyer, I should just get a lawyer ready. But for now, investigation is still going. That when the outcome, when they get the outcome, they are going to send message to me of their decision on my DBS. You know, I was surprised that what have I done, they've not established that I really carry out this abuse. DBS is writing me. Now I pass the message across to them. When I pass it across to them, they just, that's the normal thing, that until they finalize it. When are you going to finalize this? I'm not a suspect, police, police, police has carried out their own investigation. We've been set free. Now you are working on the children, how does that want to affect my DBS? They say until they finalize it. My employer, I approached them, that even if you terminated my appointment, can I work somewhere else if I need? Referees from you, they say there is nothing they can do. That if I require reference from them, they will refer me to. They will refer me to these people, that they are the only one that can reference me. I've not worked with them. They say from the referrer they receive, that they don't, they don't have the power. To give me a reference. And they've been coming, I think after two months, they conducted online virtual, virtual meeting. They said that they should rate our performance. The first time, they rated us five or over ten. The second, I give one, they gave us six all over ten. After three months, they gave us another three months, no, they gave us another six months. That you keep on watching us, if there is still a trace of the abuse. And to God be the glory, the children have been doing fine. Even these people, our family friends, that have been coming to pay us visits. When they feel like and whenever we are available, they always come, we welcome them. And we discovered that it's just like we are having a new family friend in UK. And to God be the glory, this last November, they say we are going to have a child. Child conference, whatever, and we, we were there. Before the child conference meeting, we had one virtual one and they asked everyone of them to, to rate us. They said that we are rated seven all over ten. I was now asking them, what have we done that has increased from five to seven? It is still, it is still the same report you are getting from school, from the GP, it is still the same result. That means they are just wasting our time, even till the final day. That they dropped the old case, there wasn't anything different from what we have been doing. And on the last day when they asked that they should rate us, they rated us nine all over ten, nine all over ten, nine all over ten. And they say that they are going to drop, they are going to drop the case. That if I need any information from them, that I can, they gave me their contacts, that I should just. Call them or send their details to anyone that needs more information about the case. That you don't have any interest concerning the case again, and henceforth, they won't be coming around to pay us a visit. That was how we were able to, to. And we do the same, they also ask for our advocates, that our advocate has to, have to join us. In case we, they ask us an, a question that we can't answer, that we can contact our advocate. Which will save the woman. That if you contact him, if we are okay to answer the question, if you are not okay. We can connect with our representative to give us advice on it. And most of the time, Save the Woman has been with us, attending the meeting. And he has, has described us with a lot of information, a lot of advice, and we are able to. To take a training that exposed us so much on raising a child in UK. And finally, to God be the glory, last month, everything was dropped. And we are free that we, we can go. That was how everything just went. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you very much. Uh, I don't know, have you heard about this before? Because a lot of people will say that lie, lie, no go happen. So what, what can you say about this?
In, to me too, I had it in mind that it can never happen to my family. Because of the training that I've given to my children, but to my surprise, it was just like a film trick. It was just like all these James Bond films that we used to watch when we were young. Just like a film, for a good three days, I couldn't sleep. I was wondering, ah, is this real? I left home with my kids, I came home alone. So I have to tell you, this is reality, it is really happening. It is really happening and no one could say when it's going to. When I was told that I wouldn't be going home with my children, I was like, I need people who are doing. Nothing wrong with my kids confidently. But at the end, I went home alone without my children. So it is not a lie, this one.
Thank, thank you very much, are you there? Hello, are you there?
Yes, I'm still with you, hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, I think we are struggling with the network this evening, but those of you on TikTok, please put comments. If you can hear us well and keep tapping, don't forget to drop your at me team bracelets, keep sharing, keep sharing. Thank, thank you very much, we'll be waiting if people have any question. Uh, we have another family that is also supposed to join us. But before then, let's take a look at one of the cases we have had also. So we'll be able to hear from you and compare. Had this similar experience and how were you feeling? Any meta head support, any webbing, any support from, for, for the parent? From the local authority or what do you think local authorities should have done? You know, if a matter like that happen, it's good for them to investigate. But at the same time, what support are they providing for parents? Who is supporting parent, who is looking after the webbing of parent as well? They will be saying it's child protection, it's a child focus, it's children, it's their, it's their, it's their business, you know? If you say you are only focusing on the children, how about people that at the end of the day, they lost their, uh, job? They were dismissed with immediate effect, they lose their sponsorship. This children relies on, they are dependent. And what will come out of that, you know? So let's take a look at one of these cases we've had also. Where children were removed from a couple of families at the same time. Sorry, those of you on YouTube channel, uh, apology for that. It seems they said the network is fluctuating on YouTube, you are not hearing it clearly. So if you don't mind, we will hand the YouTube channel now. If all of you can come over to TikTok, it would be great. Once you get to TikTok, Sash Save the Woman, Sash Save the Woman, Sash Save the Woman on TikTok. So, uh, those of you on YouTube, once again, thank you. Please don't forget to subscribe before you leave the YouTube channel. And click the, uh, notification button so that anytime we are live, you'll be one of those that will be first alerted. Please drop your comment, drop your question, we'll still go back to YouTube to check some question there. And if you want to contribute, you want us to bring you to the room, we've got the inner room in Zoom now, on Zoom. So you can message me on WhatsApp if you want to contribute. I want to be on Zoom, you can message me, I will private chat you please, I have five months old baby, no problem. So you can, you can, you can send me a message on Zoom, on WhatsApp. If you want to share experience or if you go on TikTok, we can bring you up if you want to contribute. So once again, those of you on YouTube, we say thank you very much for, for, for joining us tonight.